Good evening. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. The Committee on Health is hosting this town hall presentation on Medicare and the General Medicare Plan. And we've invited a vision of senior citizens. Mr. Artson Oxy, thank you for allowing your staff to be here. Jolene Almandres, who would do a presentation on the General Medicare Plan. And we're doing this in an effort to get as much information out to the community. Enrollment for Part A and B is coming up on Tuesday, March 31st. And there's other enrollment deadlines for the other parts of the plan. And Jolene would share that with us. And so if you're not able, for those in the public not able to be here, this will be showing throughout the week. And hopefully, we'll provide you much information, so you'll be informed. And if not, Jolene will also provide you contact numbers that you can be able to call to seek additional information. So, Jolene?
Good evening, everyone. I know it's 5:35, and Medicare is a very exciting program to talk about at 5:35. But I promise you that, and as I always say in my presentation, you will walk away with more information than you had before when you walked in the door about Medicare. So keep your eyes open and ask questions. We did ask the gentleman here, he brought popcorn, but he told me that it's not good. So we'll proceed without the popcorn. But yes, my name is Jolene Almandres. I am not from Medicare. People think that I work for Medicare. And I just want to let you know that there is no Medicare office here in Guam. If anybody needed assistance to talk to Medicare, they would have to call 1-800-Medicare or go online to get their information. But the reason why public health is involved is because back in 2004, we wrote a grant, and we continue to write the grant. It's been 11 years. And we are actually called a state health insurance assistance program. We're known as a SHIP in the Medicare and UHAN books. It talks about ships. If you need information, go visit your local SHIP office. It's called a state health insurance assistance program again. But locally, we are recognized as the Guam Medicare Assistance Program, because it confused people that, why are we called a state? So we localized our name. Our job is to provide information and assistance to people with Medicare. And we do that in various ways. We go out and do outreach activities, various outreach activities in the community. We provide information sessions as this one. And we also do personalized counseling. We go out and recruit individuals who are interested to become volunteers. And we train them. In fact, this week, we are in training mode for a whole week at the Pacific Star. We have new volunteers that want to join our team. And we also train partners who we work closely with. We teach their staff about Medicare, so they can turn, in turn, tell their clients about Medicare and show them how to navigate through the system. But before we go on in Medicare, for most people in Guam that have Medicare, this is what Medicare looks like for them. It's a big maze. And I know as some of you guys were walking in, you talked about Medicare. I already got questions walking in, how does Medicare work? So there is a lot of questions out there. And hopefully, through today's session, we'll be able to answer some of those questions for you. And I always tell people, if I don't know it, then we will research it and give you back that information. But the question remains, is how do you get Medicare and what is Medicare? Social Security Administration, they're the only agency tasked to enroll people into Medicare. One federal agency. You can't go to Medicare directly, because you first have to pass through the gates. And because social security is the entry point, if anybody wants to enroll, March 31st is the deadline for general enrollment period. So it actually started in January. It ends in March. These are for individuals who did not sign up in time during their initial enrollment period. And when is the initial enrollment period? When three months before you turn 65. So somebody whispered in my ear that a good senator in here will be turning 65 next year. So three months before his 65th birthday, he can go and apply for Medicare. And he has actually until, until three months after the month of his 65th birthday to apply for Medicare. So you have that window. But if you miss that deadline, then there is your general enrollment period, January through March every year. Yes?
Three months in advance. And then was, and because they are working, they were, they were told that you don't need to get A and B, and advised them to get A. So...
Okay, I can answer that.
But, but the problem was that the insurance that she was, she was, she's employed by someone who has less than 25 employees. So therefore, your social security is automatically considering this person as fully retired, and therefore Medicare, she should have B. Should she sign up now for this, for Medicare B? But if her employers decide to cut her off now, she has to wait till July?
Okay, so if I understand your question correctly, if a person is working and is Medicare eligible and has group health insurance, they can actually wait and not enroll in Medicare Part B, because their group health insurance will become primary for them. They can go ahead and elect to get the Part A, because they've earned it. They've earned the quarters. They'll be given it to them premium-free. If, if they choose to keep their employer's insurance, and if they have, that company has less than 20 employees, then Medicare steps up as a primary insurance for that person. The group insurance will be secondary.
Right, so she would need B?
She would, she would need, she, or she doesn't have to sign up for B until she retires or quits. Now, if she doesn't sign up when she's eligible for B and she has the group health insurance, she won't get penalized when she signs up in the future. The penalty is waived. But she'll have eight months after she quits her job or retires from that job to go back into social security and say, okay, now I want the B. And then when she signs up, the B will kick in, and then it will serve as her primary insurance. Does that make sense? It makes sense. Okay. Now, there's three ways that a person with Medicare can come into the Medicare system. The most common way is by age. And that magic age is 65 years old. The second way is if you're below the age of 65 and you have certain disabilities, you can also go up to social security and go through their screening process to see if your disability counts towards Medicare. You do need to have some quarters also. A third way is if you have end-stage renal disease, and that's kidney failure, you can go up to social security and apply for that, that Medicare program as well. If you're actively employed and you do have end-stage renal disease, there is a 30-month coordination period, which means you have to use your insurance first for 30 months, even though you have Medicare. Medicare will sit back as a secondary insurance. And then once you meet that coordination period, it switches off. And Medicare takes the front seat and becomes your primary, and then your insurance will come secondary. Most of the people that are going through kidney failure, end-stage renal disease, most of them up there at the U.S. Renal Centers have Medicare that they use for their insurance. Now, there's four different parts to Medicare. I was asked that question too, what are the different parts? Yes, yes. Yeah, especially by, yeah, you must have it in terms of, to be able to qualify. Let me take that back. Part B, you do not need any quarters for Part B. But for Part A, you must have some quarters for Part A. And I have a slide that will give you details on the different parts and the requirement for quarters. Four different parts of Medicare. We have Part A, which is hospital insurance. We have Part B, which is medical insurance. We have Part D, which is prescription drug insurance. And there is also a Part C. I don't know if any of you have a Part C, and if you do, you're going to surprise me, because actually, we don't have any Part C plans here in Guam. They're known as Medicare Advantage Plans, because they operate like an HMO, like a Take Care, for example. Everything bundled under to one plan. So it's a Part A and a B, and sometimes prescription drugs. And also, sometimes, they offer other benefits that Medicare doesn't cover, like vision, hearing, and dental. So you have private health insurance plans selling Part Cs. I'm hearing from discussions with some insurance companies that they're around the corner to be able to sell Part C plans soon in Guam. And a beneficiary will have an option, will have the option now. If they decide to sign up for Medicare Part C, then they will have to stop their Medicare Parts A and B, because you cannot be in original Medicare, A and B, and a Part C plan at the same time. You can, you have to choose. And that's what many people in the United States have that option. But we don't currently have that option here in Guam, in the different parts of Medicare. Okay? Any questions on the four parts of Medicare? No questions? Okay. So this is how Medicare card looks like. For those of you who have Medicare, you have this in your wallet, right? Okay, it's red, white, and blue. And if you do sign up for Medicare, Senator Adda is checking right now if it's red, white, and blue. But if you do have that, and you're first eligible, then you're going to get it in the mail at least three months before your 65th birthday. And Medicare is going to say, ta-da, here you go, here's your Medicare card. If you do not want it, in terms of the Part B, because Part B is optional, and if you earn your quarters in the Part A, you can keep. But if you do not want it, you just simply have to sign the back of the card, because you're electing not to get the Medicare, return it back to them, and they'll mail you back a card that only has Part A on it. But it's optional. On this card, you have effective dates. There's some people that have only A. There's some that only have B. Many people have the both As and Bs. And then there is also that claim number that represents actually a social security number. One of the grants that we administer in our division is also called the Guam Senior Medicare Patrol Grant. And we empower seniors to, we educate them to please protect their card, treat it like a social security card, because it does have somebody's social security number on it. And don't just be giving out freely. Medicare will not call you up and ask you for your Medicare claim number, because they already know that. So be very cautious of when you give your card out and who you show it to. Yes? Automatically, if, okay, let me take that back, or let me reemphasize that. They'll get a card automatically if they are already collecting pension. So there are some individuals, they're drawing pension as early as 62 years old, so they're in the system already. They're in social security's database. And once they're in the system, then three months before the 65th birthday, they'll get the card automatically. Right, so if you don't, if you're not getting, collecting the pension yet, then it's your responsibility. And this is where a lot of our beneficiaries, or people who's turning 65, are not aware of this information. Nobody has told them that they need to go up there. I meet up with a lot of retirees who say, I never knew. So that's one of the ways we work closely with the retirement fund and with Leo Candasa at DOA, doing open enrollment time for the government insurance. We sit side by side with insurance companies to educate our beneficiaries, potential beneficiaries about, you know, informing them of what's ahead of them, that they should enroll. Okay, good question. Now, how much does Medicare cost? For those of you who have Medicare, you're paying for it if you opt it for Medicare Part B. And if you're not opting, if you are, if you're earned your 40 quarters, then you're getting Medicare Part A for free, which means you've worked for 10 years in a private sector. Every year you worked, you earned four quarters. By the time you've worked 10 years, you've earned your 40 quarters. All social security looks at is 40 quarters. You could have worked for like 30 years, but all they need is 40 quarters. If you're married and your spouse doesn't have the quarters, then your spouse can use your quarters to be able to, be able to get Medicare Part A for free. And we have a lot of retirees who are doing that, getting Medicare Part A from their spouse. Now, individuals who don't have enough quarters, this is where you can actually go in there and buy Medicare. So if you only have 30 to 39 quarters under your record, your cost per month is $224 a month. And if you only have 0 to 29 quarters under your record, then you're going to be paying $407 a month. Now, the Government of Guam Retirement Fund provides the Medicare reimbursement for retirees and their, or their survivors, that says, okay, Mrs. Cruz, for example, if you are paying off $407, we will reimburse you back that $407, just as long as you show us evidence that you are paying for it. And we do have some survivors that I know of, two personally, who are getting the full allotment back to them, because they're paying that much of premiums. Penalty. Medicare penalizes for those who do not enroll in time. So a person who signed up, let's say at age 67, as an example, and wants to get Part A, they don't have no quarters, Medicare charges you a penalty twice the number of years you could have had it. So the example would be 67 years old, two years went by. Did they take that two years, double it to four years? Which means you're going to be paying 10% more for four years, based on what amount of quarters that you have. After you've met that period of paying the penalty, then you go down to the base rate and you only pay that premium. Now, for Medicare Part B, that's your medical insurance, the standard rate is $104.90. But anyone who's making over $85,000 a year, your premium will be adjusted, and even more. There's an income guideline that they follow. We, today, we had the Attorney General's Office in our training today, and he shared with us that they're seeing a trend, and it's regarding tax fraud, where individuals are getting letters, and I've actually seen two letters coming from social security that says that a person's going to be paying, instead of $104.90 for their premium, they're going to be paying $285 for their premium. And the gentleman didn't earn any income last year, so the red flag was, why is my premium being adjusted? We contacted the Social Security Administration and found out that there is a fraud scam going on, and they have to contact the Department of Revenue and Taxation and the Attorney General's Office, in addition to reporting it to the Guam Police Department, to let them know that, you know, this person's identification has been, has been taken, and as a result, he's getting this information. But nonetheless, to say that premiums can adjust based on how much that you're paying or earning every year. But most people pay $104.90. If they are paying a little bit more, it's because maybe they're getting penalized. So here's another penalty, 10% more for every 12 full-month period that you waited. So we have 10, Anna, that's coming into her office saying, I want to apply for Medicare now, and she's 78 years old. So do the math, how many years went by since she was 65? It's only 5:30. I'm sorry. 13 years, so what does that equate to? No, the, the double the years is only for Part A, right? Only Part A. So for 13 years, it's 10% more for every year after 65. What does that equate to? 130% more of the monthly premium she'll have to pay. But if she's a Government of Guam retiree, guess what? She'll get that, that penalty, the reimbursement back in full, including penalty. So that's something to think about. There's some retirees that are not aware of that, but that actually comes back to them. Okay, so any questions on Part A and B coverage? Yes, Senator?
If you're a Gov. Guam retiree, you said there's a reimbursement on the Part B premium?
Yes, both A and B. Premium, premium. So whatever amount you're paying, and you can show the Government of Guam Retirement Fund evidence that you paid it, they will process a check back to you and provide you with that reimbursement back, the funds back.
So do we normally get like a receipt from Medicare that we made, that we have made these payments?
Yes.
So just some kind of proof of payment?
Yeah, they actually need to see proof. If you're getting your, your Medicare premiums being deducted out of a social security check, they only need to see it annually, a statement from social security. But if you're paying your premiums every three months, every, every quarter, because you're not in, you're not collecting a social security, they actually need you to report that monthly. So there are different requirements based on how you're paying your premium. But Mr. Tite agrees right, you just, you have to show them evidence that you are paying premium. And how can you get your statements? You can actually go to social security, and they can print statements for you. You can call over their phone, and they can mail it to you. You can go online to social security's website and print out a document showing that you made your payment. But every year, social security sends out a, it's called, it's your benefit, or your benefit statement. And every year, it tells you how much you're getting in terms of social security pension. It'll also show a line item there that shows you what your deduction is for Medicare B and D, if you're also electing for D. And so, and the retirement fund will also take that as a form of evidence.
The proof of payment is not only with social security, it's also with the payment, your form of payment, if it's being deducted from your checking account or your credit card or savings on a monthly basis.
Yes, thank you for that. As long as it shows that Medicare is taking out from it, it's going to somewhere that says Medicare on it, then they'll take that as proof of payment.
If, if the payment of the premium is being deducted from those who are already getting their, their social security pension, then on an annual basis, I can, I can just get that statement from social security and then take that to the retirement?
That's correct.
And, and get reimbursed on that. But if we're not drawing, if we have deferred the pension, which means then I'll be paying it out of my, my checking account, let's say. You said that retirement will want that statement monthly?
Monthly.
Monthly, okay. Thank you.
Yes, on a monthly basis. And, and the reasoning behind that, as they explained to me, is because they don't know whether or not people have opted out of Medicare. If a person doesn't make payment, they'll automatically terminate you after trying to get ahold of you to say, hey, you're late in your, your, your monthly premium. So they need that evidence to make sure that you're still active in the, in the insurance program with them. Now, Medicare Part A, we just had a discussion today with the hospital, because they're in our training, but it was mentioned by one of the billing supervisors there, that because a person has Medicare on their card, Part A, they think that everything related to the hospital is free. So they get admitted to the hospital. Some people don't expect to pay anything, because they're paying the premium, and their card says it's free, right? Or they're entitled to it and to get it free. But that's not true. If you get admitted to the hospital, and let's say Medicare is your only insurance, then you're guaranteed, guaranteed to pay a deductible. And for this year, in 2015, the deductible, the deductible is $1,260 off the bat. So if your medical bill at the G M H, after staying there for, let's say, five days, is about $50,000, your share is $1,260. That's your deductible. Medicare covers the rest of the bill. And it doesn't matter how much the bill is. For hospital, hospital inpatient, that's your amount, $1,260. If a person has Medicare as primary and another insurance as secondary, and your insurance as secondary covers hospital benefit, then you can get the secondary insurance to cover that, depending also if that insurance has deductible. Yes, sir?
What happens to you being hospitalized in Manila? Does Medicare cover, even if you have Part A insurance?
After that, the answer would be no, only because of the fact that there is no billing system set up in Manila, for example, St. Luke or Guam Medical Regional, Guam Regional Medical City Hospital. So the way it works is, if you do go to Manila off-island, you still have to pay out-of-pocket the whole entire bill. And then you can come back and seek reimbursement from Medicare. But it's not always guaranteed. We haven't had a large success rates for people that we've helped put in documentation for. Because if the service is offered here in Guam, then, then the most likely Medicare will deny the, the payment, because the service is offered here. You really have to have great documentation to justify why you went off-island to a foreign country to get your services. Medicare prefers that you go to Hawaii, the closest U.S. hospital, to get your service, if you can make it that far. But if you can say that, for example, your life is on the line, and traveling to Hawaii, your chances of living is not as great as if you traveled to the Philippines, and that's something that you can put in your, in your packet, and have it documented by a physician to say that it was, it's a life or death situation.
Annual physical exam. I had an acute throat infection. That's not planned.
That's not planned? Yeah, so you can definitely put in that claim. But I always tell people, before they go to the Philippines, don't expect, you have to always expect to pay out front, upfront first. And then, again, get your documentation together, and have your doctor, get your doctor's notes. There's, it's a simple form, believe it or not, to answer the claim form. It's a CMS 1490s form. But it requires good documentation that you send off to Medicare. And the contractor for Medicare that services Guam is Noridian, that's who you're going to send it to. And they'll review the claim to see whether or not it's legitimate. In our office, and we can get your name and we can provide it to you. Yeah, or it's available online. You can actually Google CMS 1490s reimbursement. But I'll give you that information. And it's, you can download it and print it and send it off. Okay, any questions? Okay, so Medicare covers Part A hospital insurance? Now, what happens? Now, this covers your day of stay from 1 to 60 days. And what happens, though, if you stay in the hospital for 61 to 90 days? Does Medicare just say, okay, you're on your own? Or is there still coverage? What do you think? There's still coverage, right? Okay. But there is coverage, but there is also your responsibility of payment, because after days one, day 60, the way it works is from day 60 to nine, 61 to 90, you now have to pay a co-insurance of $315 a day. So in addition to your deductible, you pay $315 a day from day 61 to 90. Now, if you've, if you exceeded that length of period in the hospital, straight through, then you're going to have to pay $630 a day from days 91 to 150. Medicare gives you only 60 lifetime reserve days, which means if you use that period of time, and you should go back into the hospital and actually stay again beyond 91 days, you're no longer going to get Medicare to cover you. They cap it at 90 days thereafter, because you're only given that 60 lifetime reserve days for your lifetime with Medicare. Okay, so there is out-of-pocket expenses. If you do have secondary insurance, your secondary insurance may be able to cover these out-of-pocket expenses as well. Yes, or consecutive days. Now, the way it works as well is Part A deductible works by benefit period. And a benefit period says that if you go in the hospital, and then you get discharged from the hospital, and 60 days went by in a row, and should you get hospitalized again, you have to now pay a new deductible, another $1,260. But what happens if you go back into the hospital less than 60 days? You don't. You get to use the same deductible. So you still ride on the same deductible, but it picks up on the day that you left off. So if you left the hospital on January, on January 5th, and you were there for five days, you go back in on January 30th, you'll, you'll pick up at day six, and you still continue to ride on in the days. Okay? Any questions? All right. Now, Medicare Part A covers semi-private room, your hospital meals, your nursing services, your drugs, any Medicare, any medical durable equipment that you may be using. Medicare also does not cover, does not cover private duty nursing, private rooms, or any incidentals that you may be needing while you're there, like, like razors, or soap, slipper socks, personal care items. Now, I always love to give this example, because it actually sees whether or not you understood what I just said in the first couple of slides. But we have Julie, and for those of you who've seen it, you can, don't raise your hand. Well, I had people in my presentation this training, and they were raising their hand. I said, put your hand down, because you know the answers. But my question here is Julie spends three days in the hospital. How much do you think Julie will pay for her out-of-pocket, her out-of-pocket cost? Okay, Senator, they keep pointing to you. How much? $1,260. Let's go see if he's correct. You're right. $1,260. Now, here's Hector. Hector stayed in the hospital for five days in January, and then he was readmitted in early February, where he stayed for three days. How much will Hector have to pay? $1,260 again? No? I just showed the answer. $1,260? No? Okay. He's writing in the first deductible. So from January, from January to February, has 60 days gone by? No, so he'll only pay? Right, but he'll, but in total, he'll pay, yeah, he paid only $1,260. So he doesn't have to pay a new deductible. He just pays one deductible. He rides on the first deductible. Now, Margaret stayed in the hospital for five days in January, and then she was readmitted in September for 65 days. I know it's 6:15, but it's good. How much? One deductible? Okay. So he, she pays one deductible. Does she pay a second deductible? No? Okay, she has to pay the additional amount. So how many deductibles must she pay? Two deductibles plus the extra five days, because she's went in in January, or Janu- and September. So her total out-of-pocket cost is $4,095, because it's two deductibles. And then from day 61 to 65, she went over the five days. Every day she's there, she pays $315 a day. So that's the total out-of-pocket expense. Okay? One more. I'm sorry to torture you. Juan stayed in the hospital for 185 days. Break out your calculators.
Smartphone.
Yeah, 185 days straight. Right, so she's, she's, he's already entering his lifetime reserve days. So he's, he's maximizing the whole... Yeah, anybody just want to just put out a lucky number there? How much? $40,000? Anybody else? $30,000? Okay, let's look at it. How about $90,510? We actually had somebody in the training that actually, to the penny, got that amount. But looking at it closely, the person here, Mr. Juan, had to pay $1,260, the deductible. He maxed out his 61 to 90 days, so every day he's there, he pays $9,450. days. So every day he's there, he pays $9,450. He maxed out his lifetime reserve days, and that totaled out to be $37,800. And for this example, the hospital charges $1,200 a day without any insurance. So from Days 151 to 185, that's a total of 35 days. That amount comes out to $42,000. You tally it all up, it comes out to be $90,510. Now, if this person has secondary insurance or even a Medigap policy, some of these costs can be absorbed by those policies or those plans, depending. I think probably what would not be covered would be anything beyond the 151 to 185 days. Okay? Now Medicare Part A doesn't stop there because Part A also covers skilled nursing facility care. If you should be in a hospital for a minimum of three days, and you have to go to the, you get transferred to SNU, your doctor writes you a prescription, your first 20 days is covered by Medicare. So there's nothing out of your pocket that you have to pay for. But if you stay in the hospital from 21 to 100 days, then there is an out-of-pocket cost, $157.50. Anything after 100 days, you absorb the cost by yourself. Part A also covers home health care services and hospice care. So that's all Part A benefits. Now moving on to Part B. Part B, a lot of the people with Medicare think that Medicare has this 80/20% formula, and it does, but it only applies to Medicare Part B. We never talked about 80/20 in the Part A part. So how it works is there's an annual deductible of $147. After a beneficiary meets that annual deductible of paying that kind of $147 out of their pocket worth of services, then Medicare comes in and says, "Okay, we'll pay the 80%, and here's your 20%," or your secondary insurance can pay your 20%. But it covers things like your doctor's services, your outpatient medical, surgical services and supplies, your lab work, your therapies, emergency room, durable medical equipment. There's a lot of preventive services that Medicare covers. Some of them are free, like your flu shots. So we encourage our beneficiaries to use these services because they're paying the premium for it. I know this one is kind of small, but in the white handout that we passed out, it also lists some of these preventive services. If you're new to Medicare, you also get a Welcome to Medicare visit. It actually establishes a baseline of your health so that you can get Medicare to cover that for free. Now, if a person has Medicare Air B or even B, you have to use it places that accept Medicare. You go to your Medicare providers. Medicare, people, providers that accept Medicare, there's a term they use called assignment. An assignment means that they've accepted Medicare's rates. And if Medicare says, here's an example, Ellen, she goes to a doctor, and Ellen's doctor gave her a stress test, an X-ray, and of course, the doctors' visits, and it totaled out to be $600. But if Medicare says, "No, doctor, that $600 is actually worth $220. Those are our rates," then that's the amount that Medicare says of the 220, we're going to bill, we're going to pay $800, I mean, 80% out of that $220. The beneficiary is left to only pay $44 of that amount. Now, a physician can't go to the Medicare beneficiary and say, "The difference between what I usually charge and what Medicare has paid me, I'm going to collect from you." They cannot do that. Because they accept assignment, they accept Medicare's rates, they have to consider that payment in full. Okay? Now, there are some things that Medicare Part A and B don't cover, and this is where the gaps come in. Routine medical visits for eye, dental, and hearing exams are not covered by Medicare. Long-term care is also not covered by Medicare. Hearing aids are not covered by Medicare. A lot of our retirees actually hold on to their government insurance because the government insurance will pick up these portions of the coverage. I'm not sure about long-term care. Now, Medigap, these are becoming very popular on island. We have two Medicare providers on Guam, I'm sorry, Medigap providers that sell policies on Guam, one being United Healthcare. Their plans are called AARP. Now, AARP doesn't sell insurance. It's United Healthcare, but AARP endorses it. The other insurance locally available that sells supplemental plans is called Take Care. Senator, you have a question?
Can you go back one slide?
Sure, sure. This one?
One more slide.
Okay.
You said, "I can go to a private doctor out there who accepts the Medicare assignment."
Right.
Do we have a list of who those doctors are? So...
We used to keep a list, but it was very time-consuming because today a doctor can say they accept Medicare beneficiaries. Today, they don't. You can go on Medicare.gov's website and actually put in your zip code, and a provider listing will actually come out. But sometimes it's not current because you have physicians flying in and out, or they're not here today. I always tell beneficiaries, before you see the physician, find out if they do accept Medicare. You can actually also go to a provider that doesn't accept assignment, but they do accept Medicare, and they can actually charge 15% more than the Medicare-approved rate. It's called an excess charge. Who pays for that excess charge or the 15% more would be the Medicare beneficiaries. But that's okay, they can do that. But that's the cap, 15% more if they don't accept assignment. You have some physicians that actually, because Medicare pays really low, they actually don't take as many Medicare patients as they want to because they're not able to, you know, get the full amount as they would get if they were working with private health insurance companies or if people were self-pay. So we get calls in all the time, "How come my doctor doesn't accept?" Provider can actually opt out of Medicare, but if they do that, then they can't accept Medicare or send claims to Medicare for two years. That's also an option for them. Yes? As an example, yes.
So what if, you said there's also the providers that could add a 15%. What distinguishes the two? And how does a provider get that distinguished?
Well, a provider can say, "I don't want to accept Medicare's approved rate," just by simply saying, "I'm not accepting assignment." And then they can actually charge Medicare the 80%, the 15% overage they can actually charge to the Medicare beneficiary themselves. Excess charges is what they call it, a limiting charge. A Medigap policy, for example, I'm not sure if private health insurance covers it, but you can buy a Medigap policy that will cover that excess charge so that you're not having to pay the 15%. But in terms of what distinguishes it, I don't know. There is actual form that they would check off to say that we're not going to accept, but by law, it is allowable. They can charge 15% more of the Medicare-approved rate.
So how does it work in our hospital? Because we know our hospital, right, has a certain rate that Medicare pays for, regardless of, if you stay there for five days and your bill is $50,000, it's what Medicare will pay for. So for a Medicare beneficiary who has gone over the, let's say, 60 days where they would have to pay an additional, where is that cost based out of now? Is it based off what Medicare pays that hospital? And so that 305 where you explained earlier, or the three, is it 300?
Yeah.
If you go to the words from 61...
These rates are actually set by, every year, these rates don't, annually, they're given rate, they're given new rates. But this is the rate that a beneficiary can expect to pay nothing more, nothing less with regards to the daily rates. Right. These are the set rates for the Medicare beneficiary and their side. It doesn't change. It doesn't change. This is for Part A. For Part B is different. They can actually use the excess charges. Providers can use excess charges to be able to bill 15% more than the approved rate. Okay. So with Medigap policies, again, they're becoming more popular. Medigap policies are actually sold by private health insurance companies. They sell standardized plans. If you buy a Medigap policy, let's say, letter F, and you live on Guam, and you go to California and you buy a letter F, it's exactly the same benefits. No matter where you go, they're standardized. They must follow the standardized rules. As you see in the bottom, United Healthcare, they sell seven of the policies that are available nationwide, and locally Take Care sells three of these policies. So how it works is, we just talked about all these benefits on the left-hand column. You see here, the Part A deductible, $1,260. No matter how many times you go to the doctor, no matter how many benefit periods you have within a year, any tick mark that you see under a letter, that means that plan will cover that deductible. If you see a percentage, that means that plan will cover 50% of that deductible. So if it's 75, they'll cover 75% of the deductible. For all those days that you stay in the hospital beyond the 60 days, across the board, the plans will cover those amounts for you as well. Your Part B deductible, that $147, right here, Plans C and Plans F will cover that deductible. So it's good coverage, but you do have to pay for it in addition to paying for Medicare Part B. I'm not sure about the Take Care side, but I know a Plan F on the AARP side, it costs about $150 a month. They're almost the same? Yeah, $150 a month. So in addition to paying $1,049 for Part B, if you have B, and if you get Part A for free, and you elect for Part B, I mean, a Plan F with United Healthcare, you'll be paying those amounts combined. Now, you can only be in one Medigap policy at a time, and you can only be in one service area at a time when you buy your policy. So if you live on Guam and you pick up, let's say, a Take Care plan, and you relocate to Minnesota, you have to get out of your Take Care plan here in Guam because these private health insurance companies contract with Medicare to sell by service areas. So it won't work for you in another place. There's some policies that will allow you to use it for a period of time when you're off island, but not when you relocate off island. Okay? Any questions? This is optional. Yeah, we have some retirees that have inquired about that and actually have signed up for Medigap policies. I know with regards to United Healthcare, you must be an AARP member, join their membership, to be able to buy this policy because it's one of the benefits that they sell as an AARP member. I know, we had Take Care in our training yesterday, and we were told that they will sell their policies to anyone that has Medicare, anyone, including those with ESRD. Whereas with United Healthcare, you have to be at least 65 to get their plan, 65 years old. And I believe there's conditions. If you have end-stage renal disease, they won't be able to sell a policy to you. Okay? Now, the pricing for Medigap policies depends on certain criteria. I believe with Take Care, they price their policies based on gender and also age. So the younger you are and you go into their office to buy a policy, it's actually cheaper than if you're older and if you're male or female. Whereas Take Care, they price their policies just if you're a member, oh, if you're a tobacco user or a non-tobacco user. So if you smoke, then you pay a higher premium. But if you're 65 years old and buy their policy, and if you're 85 years old and you buy their policy, the prices are exactly the same. It's just based on tobacco user or non-tobacco user. Okay? Any questions? That's AARP, United Healthcare. Yeah. Not Take Care. Okay. Yes, yes, sir.
It has to be life and death for you to use Medicare in a foreign country?
I'm...
With the possibility of getting reimbursed.
Yeah.
Now, what if you're in that foreign country and there was an emergency situation with your health, and Medicare is your only insurance? What becomes of that scenario?
With that scenario, you still have to pay out-of-pocket 100%, and then you can submit claims in to Medicare. Because there's no billing system in a foreign country. There is a rule, though, that says that if you live, let's say you live in the border of the United States, for example, Canada or Mexico, and the closest hospital is that foreign hospital, then Medicare says, "Okay, then we will consider that, we will accept that, surrender your claims, and that we will reimburse you." So there are border issues in which they will consider as well. But in that situation, that's what we're seeing a lot of beneficiaries who went to the Philippines, emergency happened, and then they come back, and then what do we do now? We will help them fill out forms, give them the form, and they will submit it to Medicare. Now, many times Medicare comes back and says it's denied. But we tell beneficiaries that you can actually appeal. And there's actually five different appeal levels that you can work the system to be able to say, "Okay, if you're denying it, we want to appeal." So there's levels. So you don't have to give up at the first try. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Now Medicare Part D, prescription drugs, it's also optional. If you have creditable coverage with another insurance plan, so let's say you're enrolled in, for example, Select Care 1500, that's considered credible, you can not have to, you don't have to apply for Medicare Part D because you're getting equal to or better-than coverage with that plan. And Medicare says, "That's okay. We're not going to penalize you if you enroll late." Now, open enrollment, there's three enrollment periods for Medicare D. It actually follows the regular A and B. So if you're new to Medicare with Part D, you can sign up three months before your 65th birthday, on the month of your birthday or three months after for Part D. If you miss that opportunity, then open enrollment, October 15 through December 7, that's when you can come in and apply or switch your plans or terminate your plans. If you sign up during this period, then your start date will become, January 1 is when you can use your plan at the earliest. There are some people that use a special election period, which means that, let's say, you lived in a foreign country and you come to Guam, as an example, you have 63 days to sign up for Medicare D. If you lose your job and you get terminated and you lose your insurance, you have 63 days to sign up for Part D. Once you miss those 63 days, then you fall back into the open enrollment period to start up and enroll. If you have a Medicare Part D plan, let's say in California, and you leave California and move back to Guam, you have 63 days to switch your plans to avoid the penalty. Okay? So that's the magic number that Congress made up, 63 days. Now, there's only two eligibility requirements to get Medicare Part D. Of course, you have to have a card. We've had presentations during open enrollment period, and people come in, sit down through our whole presentation, and only to find out that they don't have a Medicare card. And as a result, they're not able to apply. But as long as you're a cardholder and you live in the planned service area, which is Guam for us, then you can sign up. In 2015, this year, we actually have two plan sponsors that sell Medicare Part D. AARP, they've been around since 2006 when Medicare D launched, and they've been around still selling their Part D plans. But last year, during open enrollment period, Envision came along. So now there's options for our beneficiaries to sign up on which plan they want to get their prescription drug coverage with. Part D works, it has a framework. There's these terms that they use, of course, premium, so you do have to pay a premium. They also charge a penalty for late enrollment, or they may assess a penalty. There's one of the plans of the two that have a deductible. So before they give you coverage, you have to use your deductible first, pay your deductible. Both plans use copayments and coinsurances. And both plans use a term called total drug cost. So how much your prescription costs, the actual value, and your true out-of-pocket cost. That means how much you're actually paying to the pharmacy. So those are important terms that you need to know. Okay? Now, the way AARP works is that they have a formulary, and I didn't bring a formulary, but they have a book of all the prescriptions that they cover, and there's thousands of prescriptions. They take each one of those prescriptions and they put it up against the formulary in a tier. So if you have a Tier 1 prescription, it means that you're in a preferred generic category. If you're using, let's say, a Tier 3, then you're already in your brand names. Tier 4 means it's non-preferred brand names, and Tier 5 is your specialty tier. The higher the number, the more expensive your drug will cost. Whereas Envision, they actually have four tiers. They still have a lot of drugs that they cover, but they just broke it down to four categories instead of five. Now, all the plans nationwide follow this framework. So you start out at Level 1. It's called initial coverage. And at initial coverage, the United Healthcare or Envision starts to calculate your total drug cost the minute you get prescriptions. So whatever you pay for your drugs and whatever the plan helps pay for you, that's considered your total drug cost. As an example, if your prescription costs $10, that's your copay as an example, and the plan pays the other $10, the $20 is considered your total drug cost. So every time you go to the pharmacy, you're going to be reaching, they're going to be calculating. If you hit 2960, you move down to the second level. So you drop down to Level 2, and that's called the coverage gap. Back in '06, that was referred to as the donut hole. Because across the board, you had to pay 100% of the drugs on your own. But today, it's changing. When you're in that coverage gap, they now calculate how much you paid the pharmacy. And if you've exceeded $4,700, then you're going to drop down to the next level, and it's called catastrophic protection. And that's where you're going to remain for the entire plan year. Now, the plan begins in January and it ends in December. So it runs by calendar year. How does it look like overall? Well, when you're under the initial coverage period, the plan will probably, the plan pays about 75% of your drug costs. You're expected to pay 25%. But the minute you move to the second level, the plan will now pay about 10% of your drug costs, and now you have to pay 90% of your drug costs. So there's a big shift. And then when you're down at the Level 3 stage, you're going to pay approximately 5% of your drug cost. So it really shifts back, and then the plan comes back and pays 95%. But remember, to get to that level, you're going to have to spend over $4,700 of your own money to get really affordable drug prices under Part D. Now, can you see that? Not really? Okay. This is Envision. Envision's monthly premium is $23.70 a month. So annually, a person is expected to pay $284.40 for their premiums. This plan has a deductible. So before you get any coverage from them, you have to pay $320 worth of your own medications. Once you meet that deductible, and here's your tiers, if you go to a preferred-cost pharmacy, you pay $2 for your prescription. Example, a preferred-cost pharmacy would be a Rexel. If you go to a standard-cost-sharing pharmacy, then they'll make you pay $10. So you have to know which pharmacy to go to to get the lower price. This plan also has a mail-order feature, and they charge coinsurance. So when you talk about a flat fee, those are called copayments, when they use percentages, that's called a coinsurance. So for example, a Tier 2 prescription, you go to a... So for example, a Tier 2 prescription, you go to a preferred-costing pharmacy, you're going to pay 15% of the cost of that drug. Or 25% if you go to a standard cost. Now, again, if you exceed $2,960 of total drug costs, you, you go down to the next level. And across the board, if you get generics, you will be paying 65% of the cost of your medicine. The plan pays 35%. And if you have any brand names, you're going to pay 45% of the cost of that prescription. The plan pays the difference. To get out of that coverage gap, again, you're going to have to pay or spend over $4,700 of drugs on your own. But look how much you're going to pay at the end. Generics go down to $2.65 or 5% of the cost of the prescription, whatever's the greatest. And for brand names, it's $6.60 of the prescription or 5% of the cost, whatever's the greatest. So this is how a Part D plan works for Envision. For UnitedHealthcare, AARP's plan, basically Levels 2 and 3 mirror exactly the same. The only difference between them is the initial coverage. Whereas as you see, there's no deductible. So the minute you sign up and you're eligible to use it the following month, your copay for, for Tier 1 is only $6. You want to go through their mail order, there's no cost savings. They just multiply it by 3, and then you get a 90-day supply for $18. So if you work the system, it'll, it'll show you. They're Tier 5, there's a co-insurance, you pay 33% of the cost of the prescription. And those kinds of drugs are like cancer drugs, where, I actually seen a beneficiary, he's taking a cancer drug, and it's $5,000 for one 30-day supply of prescriptions. We were informed by Select Care when they did a presentation to us that there's one drug that they're paying, actually, I think it was $10,000 per prescription, and he has to take it for 90 days. So his total prescription is $90,000, $1,000? $1,000 for 90 days. So it comes out to $90,000. So prescriptions are expensive. Now, we have a lot of beneficiaries that say, you know what, I don't take any drugs. And that's great. Part D is voluntary, but we always oppress upon, this is insurance. Like typhoon insurance, like car insurance, you get it just in case. We also have cases where beneficiaries come in, they didn't elect for Part D before, but then they've been diagnosed with stage 4 cancer. And then they have no Part D prescription drug coverage, and then what do you do now? Everything has to be out-of-pocket until they can get into the plan and get coverage. Yes, sir? Yes, there is. The penalty works like this. What, how they calculate it is they take the national benchmark for all D plans. They take an average, so whatever nationwide it costs for a plan, they average it out to be $33.13. Now, in this example, a person didn't have, didn't sign up for 14 months, and he also didn't have any other insurance that was creditable, which is equal to or better than Medicare for the whole 14 months that he didn't sign up when he was first eligible. So they take the 14 uncovered months, they turn that into a percentage, and then they multiply it by the national benchmark, that $33.13. And that's where they draw the 1%. So in this scenario, the penalty comes out to $4.64, they round it up. They, they add it on to your, your premium, for this example, $21.40. So this person will pay $26.10. Now, the penalty stays on the whole time that you're in Part D. It does not go away. Medicare A's premium penalty goes away after you meet those required, required years. B and D stays on the whole time for late enrollment. So that's how they, they work the penalty. Now, 1% isn't much, but you have Tinwan, who hasn't signed up since 2006, and 2015 comes along. How many years is that? A lot of years, right? That was my answer in the training, a lot of years. And, and as a result, a lot of years. The premium, what's scary about this, or what's something to think about, is that the national benchmark changes every year. And then your premiums change every year. So your penalty amount can change as well. It doesn't stay firm, it moves, it moves. Even with B, it moves depending on the premium for that year. Okay? Any questions? Yes?
So if a person was in a plan and either left the service area or whatever, you were saying earlier that you had like 63 days to, to sign up again for Part D or, you know, so that was somebody who's already in there. But this is only applies to the first time you sign up, right?
Yes, this applies to those who, who did not get Part D. We have people who signed up for Part D, let's say in '06, they never used it. They said, I don't want to pay premium anymore. So they opt out of it during open enrollment, and they have no other insurance that provides them with prescription drugs, or they have non-creditable-covered insurance. Let's say they stay out for two years after that. Those months get calculated again. So all the months that you're out of Part D and you don't have creditable coverage, they keep adding it up. And then, until you come back in, right? So they, they will count that.
So, so we have a lot of military retirees here on Guam. And, and they go to Naval Hospital to get their medical care, and they get their prescriptions there also.
Right.
But if these military retirees travel to the mainland and, and, and there's no military facility that they can go to, is, is this where Part D would be a benefit then?
Yeah, absolutely. We actually have some Tricare members that come in and want to get Part D because even their prescriptions are not covered at, for example, Guam Naval Hospital.
So then, with Part B, that gets reimbursed, that cost for, for GovGuam retirees?
Yes.
If I was to purchase Part B?
Yes.
That's actually a reimbursable cost from GovGuam retirement?
That's correct.
How about Part D?
Yes. A, B, and D, all the parts that are available here in Guam.
Okay, good. Now, on this, on this issue again about signing up late and, and getting penalized. So if, let's say, a person is fully employed and his employer provides group insurance, and so is opted not to buy into Part B or D, when they terminate that employment, do they still get penalized then? If at that time, they, they choose to, to sign up for Part B and D?
For Part B, they won't get penalized because they could, they could opt out of the B until they lose their insurance or they quit, so they won't get penalized there. But unfortunately for D, if, for example, we have GovGuam active employees who are actually Medicare-eligible, as an example. They are in the 2,000 plan with the government of Guam. And the 2,000 plans, I believe, across the board are non-creditable, which means it's, the plans are not equal to or better than D because you have to pay 100% of your drug cost before they give you any, any assistance. So that makes them non-creditable. And as a result, if they do sign up for D in the future, even though they're actively employed, they still will get penalized. But if they do sign up for the D, they won't be able to use the D as their primary insurance because their private health, their employer insurance is serving as the primary. So they're kind of, they're kind of stuck there. You buy the D to avoid the penalty, but I can't use it because I need to use my insurance from, from the government, as an example. And I have a high deductible, $2,000. So I'm basically paying premium and paying full cost of my medication. So beneficiary or a government of Guam, a active employee needs to actually do the math and say, what, which is, which is the less, the, the less of both evils, right? So to speak? Because I'm going to have to pay out no matter what. Does that make sense? Not really? Not if you're actively employed. You're, the, the reimbursement is only extended out to the retirees or survivors. But active employees, no. Because we do have a lot of retirees who are coming in, I mean, active employees who are 65 or above. They're in that, for example, a $2,000 plan. And remember, when you're in a, in a group that has more than 20 employees, that group insurance will become your primary insurance, so you got to use it first. Medicare takes the backseat, right? Your secondary insurance. For prescription drugs, there's, there's no coordination of benefits. Not like if you have A and B and insurance. Medicare will pay 80% as an example, the other insurance will come in and pay 20%. For Part D, there's no coordination of benefits. You have to only use one insurance at the counter when you get your prescriptions. So you must always use your primary insurance first. So even if you sign up for Part D and you're working, you won't, pretty much you won't use it because you got to use your primary insurance first. Yeah, that's if you're in plans that are non-creditable.
Would it be possible for GovGuam to decide to take all of, all of us that are 65 and older and pay for us to go to A, B, and D? And not have healthcare coverage, group insurance?
The only thing that I would say to that is that Medicare has the gaps, right? So vision, dental, hearing, Medicare won't cover for those parts, right? So what, what kind of coverage would you offer employees?
How about if we got A, B, D, and C, Medigap?
Medigap, Medigap, Medigap also. Medigap supplements A and B. So whatever A and B covers, and depending on what plan you buy, Medigap will pay the out-of-pocket expenses. But if Medicare doesn't cover hearing, dental, and vision, then Medigap won't cover hearing, dental, and vision, unless the private health insurance cover, cover group wants to add in those benefits. If they want to add in the benefits, then they probably, they possibly can. There, there are...
So there's no possible way that Medicare could possibly provide the same kind of health insurance that we're currently getting in group health insurance?
Because of the gaps, yes.
Because of the gaps.
Right. Because of the gaps. You have a lot of retirees who keep that insurance for those reasons. Before, the government insurance covered the Philippines. Because now the government insurance, if you fly to the Philippines and you, let's say you have a Select Care, Net Care, or Take Care, and you can't use your Medicare in the Philippines, the government has told these insurance companies that they're going to be primary. They're going to pay 80% of the bill now. And that's how the, that's how I believe the new, the plans work now for, for the active and retiree insurance subscribers, there you go. Right. Okay. Any other questions? We're wrapping up. Okay. So here's where one of the challenges always occurs during open enrollment period. Because when, when you sign up for Part D, there is a form that the private health insurance company will send you. These private health insurance company, they do not know what kind of insurance you have. So this is your opportunity. If you want to avoid the late enrollment penalty, and if you have creditable-covered insurance, then this is the form you fill out, and it's time-sensitive. Because if you don't, they're not going to wait for you until you feel like filling it out. They're going to say, here's your, here, we, we see that you're in Medicare. We see this is the, the dates you're in Medicare. We want to know if you have other insurance. If you don't answer our letter by, let's say, 20 days, then we're going to assess the penalty. And it is always true that many of our seniors, anybody, even myself, you don't open the mail right away. So you let it sit, and you let it sit, and you let it sit. And then one day, you finally open it, and then you realize there's a date there. And then you wonder why your, your premium is higher because they assess a penalty. We've actually, I share this in my presentations, but we, I, we found seniors who shared with us that they had creditable-covered insurance, yet they're paying a higher Part D premium. And we actually sit down with them and fill out paperwork for reconsideration so that they can get some of their penalties back. So you can actually do that. And I know there are a lot of people who have Medicare that are paying higher premiums because they didn't answer their letter in time. So when we catch these individuals or we identify these individuals, we'll take the time to fill out the paperwork with them. And then they mail it to a company that reviews the documents, and they will actually get those penalties reimbursed back to them. Yes?
So I got, I got this in the mail from the Social Security Administration. And in the mail was, was two forms. One was an application for enrollment in Medicare Part B. And sign and all that stuff. And then there was, in there also was a form, the proof of employment, I guess. Anyway, but I guess my first question was, where can I get the form to apply for Medicare Part D? Because they did not provide it.
Oh, okay, yeah. So Social Security has nothing to do with Part D. If you go up there and say, I want Part D, they're going to say, go see Arts and Augustine at Senior Citizens Division. Right. Because Part D is sold by private health insurance companies. And there's no, the Part D providers, Envision and UnitedHealthcare, they have no local office here. But our office, we got to learn the plans, and we actually assist you to sign up for the plan. So the, the forms are available either on the website for the companies, and we do have the handouts that we brought. Or you can sign directly up with them. Or you can go onto Medicare.gov and sign up. Or you can call the plan sponsors and sign up. So there's three different ways that you can sign up.
Can you repeat those three ways to get Medicare?
Medicare.gov, go straight into the pharmacist, to the plan provider's website and apply. Or you can actually call them up. Oh, I'm sorry, the fourth way is you can come to our office. Or we can personally deliver you a form through, through one of our volunteer counselors.
And your office is, is where?
Our office is at Division of Senior Citizens. We're in Castle Mall, so on the road to the University of Guam. There used to be a bowling alley in that building. We're a couple doors down from Subway. I think it's four doors down from Subway. Yeah, big site in the front. But the form is also available on the website, on Medicare's website. It's relatively easy to sign up using any, any of those four different methods or three different methods.
Now, there was also a form in there that said, request for employment information. So, is that for Social Security?
I'm from public health.
Oh, gosh, I'm in the wrong place.
But we can find out. What would you like?
Oh, no, no. It was request for employment information. I, I think it has to do with, with showing proof that you were employed, and that's why you're just applying now.
Okay.
Okay, I'll have to show you later.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, anything with regards to, actually enrolling, we actually, we will refer you to Social Security. Yeah, we'll refer you to Social Security. Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Going back to Plan D on the benchmark. You said it's changing all the time. Is it going up every year or it goes up and down?
It actually has been going up. But as you see, the benchmark is 33.13. The plans in Guam that are, that UnitedHealthcare and Envision is selling, it's, we're below the benchmark. But it is going up. Last year, the plan, this year, the plan is $21.40. The year before that, UnitedHealthcare was selling their plan for $20.40, $20.50. And the year before that, it was actually $9.90. So we are way below the national benchmark, way below in comparison to the average.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir?
So going back to Part D, there was something that you mentioned that it's, it's for the service area that I'm in. It's for Guam then, right? But if we, let's say, go to the mainland, and then we need to see a doctor while we're there, and then need to get prescription medication, does that Part D work over there?
It, it can work temporarily for you. So you can take it with you. I know with UnitedHealthcare, you can use it for as long as eight months out of the service area. Anything, they, they track you. So whenever you go get your prescriptions and you go to Part D provider that, or pharmacy that accepts Part D, they all go into this network or database. We have beneficiaries who have been outside the service area longer than eight months. And then UnitedHealthcare will start sending out letters saying, we noticed that you've been getting your drugs at a certain place for over a longer period than eight months. Did you change your service area? Now, again, if you don't answer those letters, they will automatically terminate you. We had UnitedHealthcare actually terminate a beneficiary in Guam who just changed their P.O. box from Baragada to Ganya. But because she didn't answer that letter in time, she actually got terminated. And she only found out when she went to the pharmacy to get her prescription filled, did they tell her that she was terminated. So we had to, we actually had to work with Medicare to get her back on and explain to them that we're only this small and moving from one, one village to the other. It's not Boston. Yeah. Okay, so explanation of benefits. Again, open up your letters to the beneficiaries because a beneficiary will always know what stage they're under. They will always know what prescriptions they got filled. And they will always know what the plan paid and what paid and you paid based on the documents that you're going to get every month. So it's not anything that you have to guess. What's more shocking to seniors is that when they do hit the, the coverage gap, if they're used to paying a certain premium, let's say $6, and then now they have to pay $25, they forget that they, the Medicare D works in levels. So we always have to remind them that, you know, watch your total, total drug cost because it can change. So this here, this example of an EOB actually shows you what stage you are in. And you get this every month as long as you use your Part D plan.